On behalf of the Board of Trustees, welcome to the March 20th, 2024 meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with roll call?
Trustee Dougherty.
Here.
Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Neinberg is not in attendance this evening. Trustee Sladek is in attendance via phone. Trustee Sladek, can you hear us? Okay, we will come back to her. And President Gagani.
Here. Thank you. All right, item number four.
This is Marty, I'm here.
Hi Marty.
Thanks Marty.
Thank you.
All right, item number four is the approval of minutes, the February 28th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. I will move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? If not, we can proceed with the voice vote. All those in favor of approving the February minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right, thank you. Item number five is our financial matters. We have the February 2024 financial report, as well as the March 2024 invoices.
And you, so our financials, we are 16.66% through the year as of February. Our revenues are at .5% as expected due to the property tax collection cycle that accounts for 96% of our revenue. Our expenditures are at 13.2%, with only the insurance other policies line at 88.8% expended as the annual premiums for the calendar year have been paid. And please note that the trustees have the updated invoice list. The Biblioteca Annual Maintenance Contract that was approved by the Board in January was inadvertently left out of the original check run. So you have the updated check run with the Biblioteca Annual Maintenance Agreement. Any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. I'll move to approve the February financials and March invoices as presented.
I will second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financials as presented. Can we proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Sladek. President Gagani.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, item number six is public comment. Before I open the floor, I want to review a few things. The First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution provides protection to and opportunity for free speech in public forums. That being said, the public meeting of a board or council is considered a limited public forum, which means that the board is within its right to regulate the length, time, and place of said free speech. The public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. As a reminder, the public comment item of this meeting is 30 minutes long. Speakers are asked to limit comments to three minutes and no more than five minutes, max. If you are representing a group, please limit your comments to one speaker for your whole group. We're going to keep it really simple tonight. If a member of the public goes over their time limit, we will motion for a five-minute recess. We will then come back and continue with public comment after that recess. If we run into more issues, then we will go ahead and end public comments. It is within my authority to do this as reviewed in our board bylaws. Please refrain from applauding, heckling, and side conversations. So we have a podium here tonight, and if you are interested in speaking, we ask that you just line up against that wall off to my right. Yeah, you can go ahead, you can stay right there. Yeah, you're welcome to speak first. Sure? So we're starting around 7:05, so we'll be going till about 7:35 with comments.
Good evening. My name is Mary Versalino. I'm a resident of Downers Grove for the last 35 years, and I am privileged to live here in a town with an award-winning library. And our family frequents the library at least weekly. The other day I came in, I was blown away by the beautiful quilts and textile art that was displayed. I met a young person at the last coffee with the council, and they will be showing their textile art and more in July. And how lucky are we? This library has served my book club for many years, and the folks who coordinate obtaining the books for book clubs are amazing and professional. I cannot thank them enough. And here's one of the books right now that we're reading, and thank you to your book club coordinator for being able to get all these for us. So thank you to he or she, I think it's Jason now, whoever it is, they're wonderful. So, in general, I think the Downers Grove, Downers Grove is lucky to have this library and with such a hard-working staff and board. It saddens me that people do harass people associated with this library. I don't know why there is a very small number of people, some not even residents of Downers Grove, who harbor such dislike and possibly vitriol for this facility. The vast majority of Downers Grove residents think highly of the library, and I only hope that these angry folks can take this energy and do something more productive with it. And I look forward to board meetings where there doesn't have to be a police presence. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brian Sewell, I'm a resident of Downers Grove. Just, you know, I guess I would like to just speak a little bit to what was just said there. There's a reason that there's so many people in here in security. It's because the library has diverted from what was, you know, I think traditionally what we see as a core role, providing information and services, and adopted whatever the latest progressive soupe du jour is at our taxpayer expense. And so this is not support of the library here, this is conflict, and this is a reflection of what's going on in this country right now. So, I'm here, I wasn't originally going to speak about the land acknowledgement, but I listened to it, I went through some of the minutes and the controversy, and I'm not sure, you know, why it is such a controversial thing, because it is perhaps, you know, the ultimate empty gesture. It does nothing. It's, certain people like to communicate to other people of similar values to themselves that they're like each other. This does not do anything to assuage the loss of land, this does not do anything to help current members of tribes that have been displaced. It just simply allows the progressives to sleep well at night. They'll get into their Mercedes, they'll drive to their 4,000-square-foot houses that are built on this said land, and they'll have a good night's sleep. It's an empty gesture, but by all means, it's a progressive idea, and so people like this do things like this. As far as the free speech is what I really wanted to comment on, you're very within your boundaries to limit free speech, which is, again, when progressives do not like what they're hearing, when it doesn't align with their social mores, they like to limit free speech. You're well within your rights, like District 58 board meetings, when they have this many people to say, "We'll stay all night, we'll hear everybody who has taken the time out", but instead, you default to 30 minutes. And in fact, you called the police last meeting because you didn't like what was being said. And they came and said, "We can't arrest somebody for trespassing, for saying something that you do not like." But you tried to chill free speech, so I'm sure that's in line with what it is you were trying to achieve. Everything that the Board has been doing, all the rules, bylaw changes, have limited speech. So you've asked us not to duplicate comments, why? This is a comment, a period where we should be able to get up and make comments. If there's 10 people that want to be sycophants to the library and say how great it is, or that America began in 1619, you should hear them. It's not what I agree with, but you should hear them. Free speech is about hearing things you don't want to necessarily hear, it doesn't mean anything otherwise. So I would ask you to not cut it off at 30 minutes, it's not going to be enough for all these people to speak. Hear what they have to say. So amending bylaws to reduce transparency, including not reading submissions that were not received and not live streaming, are all ways to control what the people of the village hear. As far as diversity, you and the Board and the library, you value diversity in everything but opinion. Laverne Beria, who was the KGB secret police chief in 1943, said, "Show me the man, and I will show you the crime." And that's, I believe, exactly what you've done with Bill on the Board. So you've found something, you think you've got him, but you're going to be a weaker library and a weaker Board without diverse opinion. So regardless, why would anybody with a diverse opinion want to serve with you guys if they're, when they represent something that is not a progressive idea, you're going to, you know, use your minions to try and track down some transgression and then run them off the Board? This Board and this library is like a car with an alignment problem turning hard left. And your decision to try and eject Bill is like, the solution is removing the steering wheel for you, so you can go into your progressive ditch, right? You've got group think, that's what's going on there. So I don't think you'll replace it, once you run Bill off, you replace it with someone just like you, a non-diverse candidate. So I implore you to consider diversity in the selection, knowing that you're not going to select, but there's a Board member here, I'm sure, that will be making recommendations, and do what's best for the library. Hear other voices. The color of the skin is not what should be a primary consideration. It should be diversity of opinion. And if you're all in agreement and on the get-along, to go along to get-along gang, you have Board dysfunction. Thank you.
Last month's board meeting, wow, what a barn burner. You had Swantna banging her fists on the table, yelling at residents to shut up. You had Friends of the Library people, AKA Friends of Censorship, shouting down speakers, the Board calling the police, and then members of the Board getting up and leaving the meeting. Boy, whoever said that the library is a staid, prosic place run by a bunch of spinisters? Well, they have not attended a Downers Grove Library Board meeting. And from what I understand, Swantna, you are a YouTube sensation. David, at last, at past Library Board meetings, you have been bemoaning and lamenting the fate of our democracy and the state of civility in our society. Yet, at the last board meeting, you sat and did nothing as the Friends of Censorship shouted down speakers, and Swantna resorted to Gestapo tactics to shut down free speech. As I was speaking during the public comment portion of the meeting, Swantna rudely interrupted my address to this Board. Then Marty flew into hysterics, motioning for the library personnel to stop me from speaking while I was addressing this Board during the public comment portion of the meeting. When that failed, you folks called the police to get them to do your dirty work. You demanded that the police remove residents from a public meeting because they had the audacity to exercise their First Amendment rights. They dared to question you, they dared to criticize you. David, and the rest of the Board, all of you sat and did nothing. Swantna makes up arbitrary rules about how to address the Board. Yet at the last board meeting, Swantna mocked a young resident during the Board's public comment time. So much for decorum. But that is how, but that is how it is with you progressives. Defund the police, but call them when you want your critics silenced. Condone the burning of cities, condone looting, condone protesters who burn and vandalize Catholic churches, and condone young progressives who call for the genocide of Jews, because progressives call it protected speech. But when a resident addresses Julie, call out the police. This Board is in dire need of remedial education on the First Amendment and its importance in a democracy. The taxpayers give this Board $6 million a year to operate the library. Yet every year since 2021, this Board has spent more than $6 million. Thus, you have been plunging into the cash reserve. In 2021, your cash reserve was $1.4 million. And by 2025, that cash reserve will be down to $78,000. This means that this Board has blown through $1.3 million in just four years. All of you should be removed from the Library Board for your fiscal incompetence. This Board did spend $86,000 on an equity port. What an utter waste of money. This Board could have spent that money on educational opportunities for the whole community. For example, this Board in conjunction with the Downers Grove Historical Society could have sponsored a reenactment of the famous Lincoln-Douglas debates. You could have hired Lincoln and Douglas reenactors, you could have secured the Edwards House on Maple Avenue as a place to hold the debates, with the front porch serving at that historical house debate platform. Then you could have reached out to the drama clubs at Downers North and South and the other area schools to solicit the students to attend the debates dressed in period costumes. You could also have reached out to the speech and debate teams at those schools and invite those students. Those students would have been enthusiastic participants for an event such as this. You could advertise this event to the wider community, to drum up community participation for an event that highlights the proud history of our state. It would be an event where all could participate and all would be welcomed. I tried to get Julie and the Board's interest in this project more than a year ago, but no response. I guess you were just too busy promoting your vulgar, vulgar form of entertainment, your drag queen bingo night. Perhaps all of you could do something that everyone in this community could participate in. Perhaps.
Good evening. My name is Molly, and I've lived in Downers Grove for over seven years. When I decided to speak tonight, at first, I couldn't decide what to speak about. Should I discuss how the U.S. Supreme Court has determined that there are permissible restrictions to the First Amendment during public forums, or that any speech that can be perceived as a threat of violence may be a crime? Should I talk about how democracy is defined by the acts of good citizens, which includes behaving with honesty, compassion, and respect? Or should I speak about how many public libraries have become pillars in their communities because of the vital resources they provide the public, including internet, youth and senior programs, and access to social workers? Ultimately, I decided to focus on why it matters so much to me that anyone who wants to access library resources for legitimate purposes is welcome to do so. In 2016, my husband and I moved our two young kids to Downers Grove to be closer to my grandmother and uncles, and to hopefully find a supportive place to raise our family. Within months of our move, our youngest was diagnosed with a rare genetic syndrome. As anyone who has raised kids will probably tell you, it can feel quite isolating when your kids are very young. Add in moving to a new town, navigating a diagnosis that some doctors haven't heard of, and encountering the social barriers that come with having a disability, and we felt lost. We slowly started making connections at our new church where our oldest was attending preschool, but I still struggled to find places that were accessible and welcoming to both our kids on the days I wasn't working or visiting my grandmother. Then, I found the Downers Grove Public Library. It didn't take long until we were coming to the library one to two times a week. We would come for storytime and stay to play. In fact, some of our youngest's first words were chanting along to, "Miss Mouse, Miss Mouse, come out, come out, come out." No matter what moods we were in, or what accommodations our youngest needed, we always were and still are safe and welcome at the library. This is what I want for everyone who wants to safely access the library, regardless of any disability, housing status, gender identity, or other lived experiences. You see, for so many of us who actually live in the community and use the library, this is not about politics, rhetoric, or hiding under the guise of diversity of opinion. It's just about supporting a public space that is trying to be safe and welcoming for all. I'd like to conclude by thanking the library staff and trustees who exemplify what it means to be a good citizen by acknowledging colleagues, following policy, acting in good faith, and remaining committed to the principle that libraries are for everyone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Spahn, and I am a Downers Grove resident. A few days ago, there was a social media post on a local parents' group about the DGPL. The poster shared a meme that stated, "Libraries aren't just for books anymore. What's something you can do or rent from your local library that may surprise you?" The poster stated, "What does the DG library have that may surprise some people?" As the answers here suggest, it's not just books anymore. Then, something truly amazing happened. Over 40 people commented on this post with examples of what Downers Grove Library offers beyond books. Did you know that you can check out sewing machines, a telescope, night vision binoculars, a metal detector, jigsaw puzzles, an air fryer, digital cameras, special glasses for the colorblind, giant magnet tiles, learning backpacks for kids, hotspots, Roku sticks, media editing tools, take-home crafts for adults and kids, summer and winter reading challenges, scavenger hunts, tools, video games and consoles, and a thermal imaging camera? When I thought this was incredible enough, someone posted the link to the Anything Emporium Downers Grove Library. You can find this on the DGPL website under the Beyond Books tab. These items and services are having a real impact on members of our community. A friend reading the post discovered the night vision binoculars and has put a hold on them, hoping to take them on a spring break camping trip. The teenage daughter of a friend has put a hold on the special glasses for the colorblind, so that her father, who is terribly colorblind, may see the colors of spring for the very first time. Community members who do not have subscriptions to streaming services are able to use the Roku sticks. Community groups such as Girl Scouts are using the meeting rooms. Tudors have a safe space to teach their students. To the staff, our wonderful library director, and the five Board members who support community programming, thank you. Thank you for making our library safe, welcoming, and inclusive. DGPL is truly the golden crown of Downers Grove community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Deal, and I'm a Downers Grove resident, and I support Julie Milavec. Julie is an American patriot. Now, why do I say that? This nation has always been a land of diverse voices. Unfortunately, those voices haven't always been heard. In fact, many of them have been oppressed. But that's not the case anymore, at least in Downers Grove. Why? Because of people like Julie. Because of people like, because of Julie and people like her, we're finally beginning to learn more about the country we have always been and always will be. That is why I support Julie, and I'm proud to support her and the Downers Grove Public Library. I also believe in freedom of speech. However, freedom of speech also comes with consequences. For example, a couple of days ago, Board Member Neinberg retweeted an article by the Babylon Bee, which made fun of a transgender woman named Dylan Mulvaney. The article misgendered Dylan and mocked her. It was a hateful, transphobic article. Now, you could retweet that on your own Twitter account, but there are consequences. I don't want someone like Neinberg who does that representing my community and the Downers Grove Public Library. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Steve Wilmus, I'm a longtime Downers Grove resident. I am concerned, along with other residents, about the direction our library has been taking, highlighted by the recent or the ongoing attempt to remove Bill Neinberg from his position as trustee. I am also concerned about the blatant political bias exhibited by the library as pointed out by Mr. Neinberg. The library does not always fulfill material purchase requests submitted by patrons, but they give little or no justification sometimes. One example is the book Irreversible Damage by Abigail Schreier. I requested the acquisition of this title and confirmed that others did as well, but the book was never purchased. Another concern is the library's bias against conservative authors. A good way to understand this is to read the appears-on THESE lists taken directly from the online catalog. So what I'm talking about, you go and you look up a book. Here's a book. Between the World and Me. Author Coats Tanishi. Series Thorndike Press Large Print. Language: English. Now, now it says appears on THESE LIST. And I'm not going to read them, there's like 20 lists this book appears on. So you can find that online, and I would check it out, I would look at conservative titles and see what you see. Additional bias and discrimination appear in the, again, in the same thing for conservative authors such as Thomas Sowell, Dr. Ben Carson, Larry Elder, and Jason Riley, for some examples. Only one of the books by Dr. Carson notes, and again, this is under appears-on THESE LIST, that the title appears on is Black Authors Nonfiction. Only one book, only one book. The other authors are also black, the ones, all of the ones I just mentioned beside, I just mentioned just now. But they are not afforded the same preference of being placed on that list or on the Black Authors to Know at DGPL list, which Tanishi Coats is on, is also with, I saw one more I didn't highlight, someone took just a second to look at it, we suggest. And for Tanishi Coats, again, there's like, there's like 20 different categories. This, to me, is blatant political bias, and it shows, it shows by what you put on there, on your own catalog, on your own online catalog. This borders on book banning. You've got book banning on some of these other things. Who's banning books? Who's hiding? Who's shadow banning? To further highlight the unequal treatment, see, I just said Tanishi Coats. So, under this list thing, are there any lists for conservatives or conservative topics? Are there any? This is especially troubling since I had suggested in a library meeting last spring that the library considered two small displays of books. One is books liberals would like conservatives to read, and the other one, books conservatives would like liberals to read. I subsequently received an email regarding my suggestion. A particular interest is the statement, this is from the email, from someone at the library, and I still have that email. There are no delineations made for material to be for conservatives or for liberals, except all the ones I just saw by looking on your own catalog, and probably a lot more, I didn't spend a whole lot of time on this. If only the library could achieve the neutrality suggested by that statement. The truth is, a library needs more trustees and whistleblowers like Bill Neinberg. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Noel Manley. I'm a resident of Darien, Illinois. I'm also associated with the Anishinaabe Ojibwe Native, or the wider band of Ojibwe, and I'm one of those outsiders. As I mentioned last month, I indicated that the optics on the censure of Bill Neinberg were bad. Well, the optics have gone from bad to worse. The Board's actions last month set a very low bar for censure by this body. That bar being the alleged violation of a non- That bar being the alleged violation of a non-existent policy regarding transparency with the public. And in its zeal, the board majority shamefully voted five-zero to censure Mr. Neinberg over Now, the board has established this very low bar. How will you apply it going forward? The board is now obligated to apply this new standard to its current board members. So let's begin. At the last board meeting, Board Member Carissa Doherty, during her board comments, clearly announced the library record status of Board Member Bill Neinberg. This action is a clear violation of the Illinois Library Records Confidentiality Act, that's seventy-five Illinois compiled statutes, seventy slash one. And to quote, "The registration and circulation records of a library are confidential information. No person, no person shall publish or make any information contained in such records available to the public." In addition, this law has incorporated the library's code of conduct under Section 2.8, entitled Confidentiality of Library Records. So now, the board, so now that the bar for censure and removal has been established is the violation of a non-existent policy, this board is obligated to take action when a board member is in clear violation of state law and the library's code of conduct. Sadly, Ms. Doherty, you must either resign or face censure by this board with a recommendation for removal. President Gagani, I understand your frustration during the last board meeting. Serving in public, or serving in a public role, has its benefits as well as its challenges. Among these challenges is maintaining decorum and respect when conducting these meetings. However, at the last meeting, a member of the public exercised his First Amendment rights by challenging the rules imposed by the board over public comment. Instead of engaging this person with the decorum and respect of your office, you told him to shut up. This action is a clear violation of the library's code of conduct under Section 2.9 and 2.9.1. And again, given that low bar set by the board, you must resign or face censure by the board and removal. Next, in a recent FOIA to the library, it was discovered that Mr. Neinberg's library record status was a topic of an April 1st, 2023 email exchange by library employees. Though the exchange may seem harmless on its face, it too is a violation of the Illinois Library Records Confidentiality Act and invasion of privacy under FOIA. Further, this information was not properly redacted by the library's FOIA officer, making this failure is also a violation of the same law. And again, given the low bar established by this board, these employees must be disciplined. And those of you who are attorneys on this board, you are officers of the court, and as such are governed by the attorney's canon of ethics. This canon obligates you to report violations of the law to the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office for investigation. Any inaction should result in your censure and removal from office. And finally, inaction by this board to remediate these violations of state law and the library code of conduct gives Board Member Neinberg a cause of action under Section 1983 of the Federal Civil Rights Act. This board is obligated to perform an equal application of the law and not a selective application. As I said, the optics of this matter have gone from bad to worse. Sadly, your zeal to remove Mr. Neinberg, in your zeal to remove Mr. Neinberg, have failed to include a diverse voice who could bring equitable outcomes for this library. Perhaps this might be an opportunity to find some grace and rethink this decision. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie Johnson. I'm a Downers Grove resident and library patron. I'm also speaking to you tonight as a director on the library's foundation board. In EQDG's recent One Book One Town Read, The House in the Cerulean Sea by T.J. Klune, one of the characters is quoted as saying, "And while we may not be able to help them all, we'll do as much as we can for all those put in our path." To me, this character might as well have been speaking on behalf of our library. This is what our library does. It continually steps up to help all those in its path. And despite some of the loudest and most repetitive voices in this room, this should not be overshadowed. One example of the Downers Grove Library's exemplary ability to meet community needs is the social work internship program. As you may be aware, March is National Social Work Month. There are over 200,000 clinically trained social workers in the U.S., more than psychiatrists, psychologists, and psychiatric nurses combined, according to the National Association of Social Workers. And the library has caught on to this trend. The library now has two social work interns who are graduate and undergraduate students from Aurora University, along with a licensed clinical supervisor. The library began their partnership with Aurora University in early 2020, addressing a need that librarians observed, particularly with pads clients and unhoused individuals coming into the library often when services weren't available or open. Since then, the program has continued to grow. From October 2023 through the end of January 2024, just three short months, the library's interns handled 130 one-on-one interactions with library patrons. Thirty-four percent of these patrons identified as seniors. In a one-week period of January, the interns helped a dozen individuals with temporary housing, and just weeks later, two individuals were placed in permanent housing. Other interactions range from providing access to emergency services, shower opportunities, counseling sessions, and assisting individuals with job concerns. The interns also manage the cupboard, the library's Take-What-You-Need-No-Questions-Assed pantry of non-perishable food and toiletry items. And the community has responded by continually restocking the pantry during the monthly drives. The individuals who benefit from these services are our neighbors, or could be someone that's sitting next to you tonight, or could even be yourself. What a comfort to know that the library is here for all of us when we need it. Currently, the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation funds the social work program in full. In September of 2021, the library approached the foundation, two years after the program began, asking for financial support to make the internship paid in order to attract a more diverse and qualified candidate pool. Without current plans to incorporate the social work stipend into the library budget, but recognizing the demand and alignment with the library's equity strategic plan, the library submitted a funding proposal beginning in 2022. Social work interns are now paid a fair hourly wage of $15 an hour for roughly 200 to 300 hours per semester. In 2024, they also now receive guidance and supervision from a local licensed clinical social worker, expanding what they are able to do for patrons. Interns receive a minimum two months' worth of training before they are able to engage with patrons on the floor. And with interns working throughout the school year, fall, spring, and summer semesters, there's consistent coverage with only short breaks in between. I'll admit, funding this program is no small task, and the foundation continuing to fund the initiative was also always meant to be a temporary solution, but I assure you, it is absolutely necessary. The library has shown up for us and our neighbors. Now it's time for us to show up for them and ensure the continued support of this program. Again, $15 funds one hour of vital services. I encourage you to learn more, and if you're able, make a donation at DGPLfoundation.org. Thank you.
Trustees, we're at thirty minutes.
I'll move to extend the public comment portion to include the comments from the remaining people along the side of the room.
I will second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second to complete through everyone that's standing up currently. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. So we'll go ahead and go through the last gentleman in the back. Thank you.
Thank you, board. Good evening. I'm Scott Melrose, a Downers Grove resident. It seems to me that here in Downers Grove, we are living in a novel, a novel titled A Tale of Two Boards. I recently observed the village board at work while it updates zoning regulations for a portion of the village. Trustees and the mayor worked through multiple aspects of a draft, working to move it toward a final version. Discussion and questions were welcomed and encouraged, and it was not just among the board members, but the residents observing the process. Opinions that differed from the board's consensus were welcomed, heard, respected respectfully and addressed. The mayor encouraged residents to participate in the process as policy was being formulated. And now we come to another board in the village. The second board is overwhelmingly made up of allies of the head of the staff. Those board members and the staff are becoming hostile toward opinions and concerns of a large segment of the residents of Downers Grove. We've seen a controversial event put on the schedule with no public discussion of the residents and no recorded discussion and approval of the board. We've seen a past member removed from the board for causes that seem questionable. The board has recommended dismissal of a current board member for violation of some policy that no one has provided documentation of that policy. We've seen the management create a policy out of thin air to regulate pieces of library art created by the public that are not applied on pieces submitted by allies and friends of management. For members of the board who dissent from the sacred cows of the management and the rest of the board, any reason to get that member removed will be tried, however trivial, however trivial, vague, or undocumented. And due process need not be an impediment either. As part of the attempt to remove the board member in question, members of management have made statements at a public meeting admitting to acts that on their face do violate written policy and likely state law. Some questions come to mind. Will the public boards in the village of Downers Grove represent the opinions and concerns of all residents of the village, or just those of the management and its allies? Will public boards in Downers Grove be permitted to remove members for honest difference of opinion and dissenting, using the flimsiest of charges, disregard due process, and violate state laws in the process? And will public boards in Downers Grove be allowed to run with a philosophy of rules for thee, but not for me? Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Melody Danley. From 1984 to when I retired in 2019, I was the graphics and display coordinator for the Downers Grove Public Library. During my 35-year tenure, I served under four different directors, including Director Milovic. I helped celebrate two milestone library birthdays, learning all I could about its history so I could bring that information to the public. I assisted with dispersing public information for two referendums and one major building project, as well as another smaller one. I endured with fellow staff members through some controversies over the years, and also along with my coworkers, took pride when patrons let us know that we made a difference in their lives. My job was somewhat unique in that I had the privilege of working with and for all the departments in the library. I worked with community organizations and artists on displays, gallery exhibits, and community projects. I worked with librarians and staff from other libraries on multi-library events such as the Big Read. In some of the, in some circumstances, I worked with members of our board of trustees on special events and projects, becoming acquainted with them and appreciating their dedication to the library and what it provides the community. In particular, I first met Trustee Humphries in 1980, and was delighted when he joined the library board, for had never seen anyone as committed to serving his community as Dave. Through it all, from the directors to the board, to every member of the staff, one message was always clear: The library serves everyone, and in doing so, libraries change lives. Though I don't live in Downers Grove, this is my library. I am so proud of the work that you do here, and I can't tell you what an honor it was to have been a part of it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristin. I'm a resident of Downers Grove. We moved here in 2012. Sorry, this is a little hard to get up and public speak, so I'll just try and get through it. My son was two when we moved here, spent endless hours at the library. He's 13 and still coming to the library. So what the other mom had, her stories really rang true to me as well, just how it was a great place for us to go and spend time together as a mother and a son. I want to thank all of you and the staff who continue to provide us with a safe place to gather, to read, to learn, to play, to peruse, to just be as a community. I just want to, I found a couple quotes that I just want to read. They might say, you know, speak better than what I can say. One of them is from Sydney Sheldon, who wrote, "Libraries store the energy that fuels the imagination. They open up windows to the world and inspire us to explore and achieve and contribute to improving our quality of life. Libraries change lives for the better." Another one by Andrew Carnegie, "A library outranks any other one thing a community can do to benefit its people. It's a never-failing spring in the desert." And finally, by Walter Cronkite, "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation." Thank you.
Ed Brainerd, Downers Grove resident. How many times must I say it? The library is not safe for our children. It's a ticking time bomb. I've been speaking to this issue for over two years. The library director and board have done little to nothing to make the library secure for our children, until recently. What have they done? They've gone on the attack, of course, to those like me who are calling them out for the unsafe environment they have created. During the last two months of meetings, Ms. Doherty, trustee, Ms. Milovic, the library director, claimed that the Downers Grove police incident reports that I have quoted from are inflated and misinformation. The library's incident reports and numbers are correct, and mine are wrong. That the most police visits to the library are for minor incidents. Look over here, nothing to see. The library is safe. Not. Even after I recited eighteen major incidents that have brought the DG police to the library, including an incident about a drunk gentleman in the children's room. Ms. Milovic really took issue with this incident. I quote, though, from Ms. Milovic. "There has not been a drunk person in our children's room." That's from some other library, not ours. Well, let me quote from a library incident report, from none other than Ms. Milovic. "The infraction, open possession using, under the influence of a controlled substance." Incident description: Around 3:30, the kids' desk placed a call for a building monitor. Once there, the staff alerted me to the presence of a man who was staggering about the shelves. I approached the man and asked him what he was doing. He said he was looking for a book in the children's room. I told him he had to leave because he was drunk. We then walked out of the kids' room. Let me repeat Ms. Milovic's comment from last month's meeting. "There has not been a drunk person in the children's room." That must be from some other library, not ours. You lied to us, and it's on video, Ms. Milovic. What else are you lying about? You should resign immediately. It's Ms. Milovic and the board providing misinformation and telling the residents of Downers Grove the truth about incident, not telling them about the incidents in the library, which required the police to come over and over and over again, not telling us about such things as the us about such things as the library's latest resident, who's wearing an ankle monitor. The library's number-one responsibility is to make the library safe for our children. You, Ms. Milovic, are not doing so, and worse, you're lying about it. Therefore, I'm issuing a warning to Downers Grove mothers with babies and parents with young children. The Downers Grove library is unsafe. Do not come here. You'll be at risk and in danger. In conclusion, you lied about no drunks in the children's room. You lied as to why the drag show was canceled. You lied to a Downers Grove residents regarding the guidelines of window painting. So what else are you and the trustees lying about? Is it your censure and call for removal of Trustee Nienberg? Or is that too just a pack of lies? Rather than removing Trustee Nienberg, we should consider firing Ms. Milovic and censuring and removing all the other bobble-headed trustees for failure of duty in providing a safe library for the residents of Downers Grove.
Good evening. Eileen Brainerd, resident. Removing a library trustee is a very serious action and requires a serious offense to qualify. The board has failed to present even a weak attempt at being serious here. This is just a witch hunt to remove someone who's getting a bit too close to uncovering some uncomfortable truths about the library. The first offense is regarding a comment on X social media site. Mr. Nienberg identifies himself as a library trustee but doesn't mention where. His profile doesn't even identify himself as a Downers Grove resident, an Illinois resident, or a U.S. citizen. He could be a library trustee from another country. Exercising his free speech is not an offense against the board. His second alleged offense was an attempt to send a draft document to a resident. No bylaws even cited for this offense. The document was not marked confidential. Your resolution even goes so far as to say it was presumed to be confidential. Being confidential and being presumed to be confidential are two different things. To be serious, the document needed to be marked confidential in order for this to be a violation. It was not marked confidential. Again, this is just a witch hunt. This was not an offense, much less a serious offense. So we have two non-offenses being presented as the case against Mr. Nienberg. The village council must reject this witch hunt. Mr. Nienberg is removed from the board. If Mr. Nienberg is removed from the board, we will demand that Carissa Doherty be removed and Julie Milovic be fired for revealing personal information about a resident in a public venue. A state law was broken by both Ms. Doherty and Ms. Milovic. The library likes to espouse great fervor for diversity, unless it's diversity of thought, and of that, there is no capacity. Conform or else, you'll be removed. Mr. Nienberg's offense is representing a diverse viewpoint. Downers Grove must have diversity of thought on this board. I ask the village council to retain Mr. Nienberg and appoint another conservative for the next vacancies until we have a balance of three-three on the board. Before ending, I'd like to say to all those who will be saying, "Racist and bigot speaker," if you say that, then recite what was said, where it was said, and by whom it was said. Without that, it's just name-calling, which is simple bullying, and that is not acceptable.
My name is Robyn Triloff. I've been a resident for more than 30 years. My comments tonight are in support of the library's strategic plan. The collaborative process in which the library engaged to seek public input produced a relevant, realistic, and sustainable plan that is responsive to the community. By listening to library staff, patrons, and stakeholders, who are committed to the library's success, our library has developed a strategic plan that reflects the needs and priorities of Downers Grove residents. However, for the last year and a half, the library has been beset by self-serving interlopers who clearly do not have a genuine interest in the library's success. Their priorities do not align with the library's mission, so they attempt to disrupt board meetings by promoting their own interests. I applaud the five library trustees, who, in the face of these agitators, have remained focused on protecting the integrity of the strategic plan and library operations. In doing so, you safeguard the interests of those who are truly dedicated to the library's
Hello. My name is Jill Bartleme. I've been a resident of Downers Grove for about 15 years now. Didn't really know, didn't prepare anything to say. So first, I want to start with, thank you all for everything you do, and apologize to you for what you guys have gone through for the past year or so. It's quite disappointing as a resident to see what this has become by a small group of people who seem to like to just show up at meetings all over town, even if they don't live here, and just say the same thing over and over again and cause a lot of trouble. I wanted to talk in regards to people declaring the safety of this library. Well, I actually have children that come to this library. I have a teenager, who is currently at Herrick, who has been coming alone, on her own, with friends, meeting friends, to this library for more than two years now. And I have no concerns at all about her safety. She has no concerns about her safety. All of her friends and classmates that she meets here have absolutely no concerns about their safety. Yes, there are other people that come in. This is America. This is a public building. That's what public buildings are. You might want to look up the Constitution you keep, you know, talking about. There was one time that there was an incident when my daughter was in the library, and I have to, again, commend the staff because it was, there was just some yelling incident with a patron that came in, and it was on the opposite side wherever my daughter was, but one of the staff members immediately came over to where my daughter and her friends were doing homework and just made sure that they were okay, and even gave them some snacks, just in case they were upset. So that is the wonderful job that our library is doing. So if, I'm really tired of people who aren't actually there and have no stake in the matter preaching about stuff they know nothing about. And the wonderful thing I love about this library is that everything is on your website. It's transparent. It really is transparent. Unfortunately, the trustee in question can't even find that information, according to the recent FOIA, doesn't even know where to find the FOIA. That's pretty sad when a trustee doesn't know where the public FOIA information is on the public library website. And it's clear that his buddies don't either, because maybe they would find the information that they claim you all are lying about, because it's really easy to find. And it's ironic, too, when people are calling you, claiming that they're being called names and blah, 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 when they're up here calling you liars, when there's actual evidence that you're not. But, you know, they'd have to read and look it up. Look it up and read it, you know? That might take a little time, but... Also, I also wanted to mention, as far as the window painting goes, I find it a little ironic or concerning that it's just a lot of whining when this certain individual did get to do his window painting and everything was clearly laid out in emails. He got his window painting, and he just, he was upset that the grammar was corrected on a word, and then he decided to go after the LGBTQ group specifically, when the library also has another group that does paintings every year, like for Halloween, which is the Downers Grove management, and there's also the ice sculptures. So I find it just, you know, a little selective that only one group did he demand the emails from and that information from. Why not go after the other ones? It's just food for thought. Thank you all again. Have a good evening.
Hello. My name is Laura Kamidolsky. I'm a Downers Grove resident. I support our library and most of the board here. The library is important for storytimes, for early childhood emergent literacy, for Lego and other school-age programs, for a place for teens to go, and on and on, all the great programming you do. I am fully in support of that. I just dislike seeing one board member kind of tear this down and not really have the mission of serving everyone in mind on this board. And I, the supporters of Mr. Nienberg seem to insinuate a lot of things that I think are untrue about our library's finances and about the safety of the library. And I was so glad to hear the foundation person here talking about the social work intern program and learning more about that. I think it's so valuable because they lay, again, the whole issue of homeless people on the library, that the library can somehow solve that magically and claim to care about those people. But I think that kind of insinuation about this kind of proves that they don't, and it's more of a culture war of they're bringing this to the board. So again, I support this board, and just, please keep going. Thank you.
Good evening. Ed Pauling, longtime Downers Grove resident. Apologizing in advance for not making this a personal political platform. I just want to talk about the library. I got an email today, and it was a scorecard or a report card about 2023 at the library, and I thought it was fantastic. I mean, especially, it's amazing you come here and hear all kinds of weird views about what they think is going on. And in very small font, I saw that the library came in under budget last year. You know, it was, here's the revenue, here was the, you know, expenses paid, and actually spent less money than the library would have been allowed to. And I think the reason it was in small font is, I know I've seen these in past years, and this is not an aberration. This happens year after year. And so I think it's very commendable, very responsible financial stewardship that the library continues to do this. I feel, you know, we can trust you, trust the board, trust the staff with our tax dollars because I know you spend it wisely and are careful to make sure you do that. It also said that over a million items were circulated last year, which is a pretty big number, 60,000 events, you know, it goes on and on. There's all these things that, there are 31,000 people that have library cards out of 50,000 people in the area, and so that comes out to 34 items checked out last year per person, per cardholder, and then like two events. That's, that's pretty impressive. That's every 10 days, somebody's checking something out. Every person, on average, checking it out. That's, that's a lot. All of that while coming in under budget is very impressive. So thank you. Keep that up. The 31,000 out of 50,000 is a good number. I mean, it's clearly the majority. It's 63%. And I know that there are periodic meetings to look at the strategic plan. One thing that I would ask is, I'd like to see that 31,000 move up. It'd be great if it was 50,000. So I know when you're doing focus groups or meeting with people, I would hope there would be some extra emphasis on the people that are in that 19,000 that are taking advantage of this great library so that we can get those numbers even higher.
This gentleman will be our last public comment for the evening.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name's Laurie Palacca. I assure you that I, somebody mentioned a Lincoln-Douglas debate, and I am not Lincoln nor Douglas as far as an orator, but I'll do my best here to convey what I want to convey. I'll just start out that, I think, I don't want to, I'll just say we have a clear and present danger at the library. And I'm not talking about some of the other things that are happening. I'm actually talking about the security. I'm really concerned about the people around the library, the people that are coming in the library. I mean, I was, I was at, I brought my granddaughter there. She's a year and a half old, and I didn't tell my wife this, but so, we dropped her off, and I'm in the parking lot, and I'm watching, and I, because of my training, and I'll tell you about that in a second, but my, my training is, you can't say that somebody's drunk or intoxicated or on drugs. They appeared to be intoxicated, appeared to be on drugs, appeared, so I have two people dragging themselves through the parking lot, right? Obviously, something was wrong, right? Holding on to each other, anyway. So I observed that. I observed other people around the library, and I will tell you right now, I am not bringing my granddaughter back to the library. Okay? Because I am concerned about her safety and the concerns there. And I think the board should, it's a clear and present danger. I think they should immediately address what's going on around the library and put a security person there, because deterrence is a, is a great thing for some of these people, right? Because if they see somebody with a badge or whatever, all right, they are going to stay away. And I'm really concerned about the safety of our kids, and I'll tell you why, okay? So I was an airline pilot, flight instructor, ground instructor, SIM instructor, chief pilot. I taught security and safety at the airline, okay? And one of the things we always taught the pilots and flight attendants was, you have to be vigilant, okay? This all happened because of 2001. So when I go into places where some of these other people, I'm always trying to be vigilant and look and see what's going on. So I have a real concern about the safety of our kids at the library. And one of the things that we did, like what George Bush did with TSA, was a deterrence, okay? You know, we try to keep people out who want to harm us, right? So if they see somebody there that is like, you know, a person of authority, you know, then I think that will help keep our kids safer. And so I know this is, this is something that you guys could address relatively quickly, and it's not something of, you know, all these other issues that are going on with the board, but I have a really big concern about the safety. And like I said, I taught safety and security, and, you know, it's, we have to remain vigilant. And so I have those concerns. And so I really would appreciate the board if they would address those concerns and do something about it. And I know there's like, you know, some people have said, oh, well, something happened, and somebody addressed it at the library. But again, I think if you have somebody there that is standing at the door, whatever, has a badge, security badge, doesn't have to be a policeman, but I think it would deter and would keep some of these people away from our kids and keep them safe.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We are on to item number seven, trustee comments. Marty, I don't know if you're with us still, if you... Marty, I don't know if you're with us still, if you are interested in making any comments.
I'm here. Hold on, let me see what the rest of you have to say and then fill in anything I think may be missing. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else like to go first?
I'll go first. Can you hear me? Is this on?
Yep.
I can't ever tell. Okay. Thank you all for your interest in the library. Your presence here is a clear indicator of the significance of the public library. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the two moms who brought up bringing their children to play in the library. That was me several years ago, so I had a little connection to that. And also bringing up the Facebook post with the list of items that people could check out. I also saw that post and it was beautiful and thrilling. And I don't know that we have air fryers, but that's interesting. I don't have that much that I want to say today, but I feel like I need to reiterate something that I said last month because part of my comment was in the press and not the part that I think was the most significant. I'm really honored to be sitting on this board. I feel it's a privilege to be here and I feel it's a privilege to be given this responsibility to serve our community. It's an opportunity I do not take lightly. It's an opportunity to advocate for our library. Oh, my paper always goes the wrong way. It's because I have to make the font so big because I'm not wearing my reading glasses. In this role, sorry, an opportunity to advocate for the library and everything that a strong library means for a healthy, thriving community. In this role, I've spoken with many patrons, patrons of all ages, backgrounds and opinions. And in my years as a trustee, I have worked with other trustees who have come from different backgrounds and have had different opinions. In fact, when I joined this board, there were two of what some of you may call conservatives sitting on this board, who maybe had, as some people are saying, diversity of thought. What mattered is that we were sitting on this board together to serve the mission of libraries. We had a willingness to work together in support of the mission of DGPL, to move initiatives forward, to be committed to doing the work. We had productive and respectful debates. I'm very excited as we embark on this new strategic plan, seeing where it takes our efforts as well as those efforts of the staff. Then the staff of DGPL in the coming years, including growing partnerships with other DG entities. My hope is, as we do, more events with the park districts and schools, we will get even more cardholders, as one of our commentators made today. I also want to take a moment to thank trustee Doherty for you leading the charge on setting goals for us as a board and as individual trustees. I've enjoyed researching my own opportunities to learn and grow to, I know what my strength is and I know what my knowledge is in, and I know where my weaknesses are as a trustee and I appreciate you setting those goals for us because I am looking forward to the opportunity to become a better trustee and serving the sport in a better way. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I know we say that frequently, but we mean that. And I mean everybody. It's a public library and this is a public meeting and we're glad that you have an interest in the library and come to tell us about your thoughts. And we appreciate, we always appreciate information and we appreciate the civility that's been shown here tonight. Thank you so much for that. The only other thing I, I'm not going to repeat what I said last month. I think you all, most of you heard it and can read it. I am not going to repeat that because it would waste everybody's time. On the positive note, though, I want to call attention to the library publication, The Discoveries, which was in my mailbox very recently. And it's wonderful, as it always is, I think. Even I learn things from reading The Discoveries. There's a picture of the new tween area. I didn't even know what that word was until, tween. But that's, that's a wonderful thing our library has done. It's also the issue that contains a lot of numbers. It's the annual report for the library. And most of these numbers don't surprise me, but a couple of them do. I mean, who knew that we had 420,948 people who entered our library last year? Who knew that we offered 1,692 programs? And when I say we, I'm talking about our library staff. We have 31,608 cardholders of our public library. We had 60,018 items which we shipped out to other libraries through interlibrary loans. We also had a bunch come in. So it's, it's, it's an enlightening list of things that, that, it's the annual report of libraries to the stakeholders. So take a look. Thank you.
All right. I had just a couple of quick notes before my more formal comments. First, I wanted to thank the village for allowing us to meet in the council chambers tonight. I'm not sure that I prefer it overall, us up on the days like this, but it does change the dynamic and it's interesting to reflect on those differences. Second, I was privileged to attend a recent village council meeting where Mayor Barnett proclaimed March Social Work Month is one of our public comments made, which made me proud of our village and of the work the library's been able to do as with the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation to hire those social work interns for the last few years. It's, it's a really special thing for us to be able to do and I wanted to give a special shout out to those library social workers. And finally, I wanted to thank EQDG for hosting last week's activities around their One Book One Town initiative. This year's selection, The House in the Cerulean Sea, is one of my favorite books and its messages of love and hope and belonging are especially resonant with me right now. To quote the main character, anger and fear and hate are loud, but I think you'll learn it's because only a few people shouting, desperate to be heard. You may not ever be able to change their minds, but so long as you remember you're not alone, you will overcome. And so I thank everyone who's shown the library support over the last several months and continue to remind us that we're not alone. So those of you who heard me speak at previous meetings know that I'm very interested in information literacy and ways to combat misinformation. One of the ways that experts say can help us identify potential sources of misinformation is by keeping tabs on our emotions and being especially alert to statements that seem intended to stoke anger or fear or outrage. We've all seen examples of this in the news or on social media and this is definitely not unique to one side of the political spectrum or another. We see those headlines that grab our attention, make us think, what the heck? What have they done now? And they get us to click to read more. While I'm sure this is great for online advertisers, triggering the emotional part of our brain short circuits the more rational parts and leads us to think and to say and to do things out of fear and anger. Now, of course, there are things in this world, war, poverty, corruption, that absolutely deserve outrage. But there are some people who absolutely rely on that outrage to keep us distracted, to keep us from getting to know each other as neighbors and as fellow community members, to prevent us from understanding what we have in common, to undermine our ability to innovate and to move forward. And I don't want that to happen to our library. Library board members, as you've, as you've heard before, are volunteers. We don't get paid and many of us have full-time jobs. So we don't have time to fact-check everything and make sure that everything that is said here is absolutely true, although it's sorely tempting. So that's why I'm asking all of you for your help. Anything that you heard tonight that got you mad or scared or outraged from any of the speakers, I encourage you to get curious. The thing that got your adrenaline going, the thing that made you think terrible thoughts about the other side, how do you know it's true? What parts of the story are you missing? Is there a way to find out? Can you do a quick Google search? Have a conversation with someone? Make a visit to the library? Peruse the library's transparency page? Getting curious can help us all find a more nuanced view of things and reveal where misinformation may be getting in the way of understanding. So here are a few things that stirred up my emotions that I wanted to make sure to get curious about and to encourage all of you to get curious as well. First, you heard from Mr. Manley that I broke the law during my comments last month. That is scary. You should absolutely get curious about that allegation because we need board members to act with integrity. The fact that trustee Nienberg did not have a Downers Grove library card is a matter of public record and did not require any special conversations with library staff or access to library systems. The information can be found in a 2022 FOIA response on our library's transparency page in an email dated July 7th, 2022. As a sidebar, that particular FOIA in which trustee Nienberg's library card status appears is particularly worth a read for anyone interested in that trustee's origin story and appointment to this board. As a trustee, I of course am familiar with the Library Records Confidentiality Act and reviewed it before I made my public statement last month. As you heard in Mr. Manley's remarks, the act states that registration and circulation records of a library are to be confidential and cannot be published or made available to the public. If you were to continue reading further down into section 1C, it further defines registration records as any information a library requires a person to provide in order for that person to become eligible to borrow books. And in the case of the Downers Grove Public Library, according to our website, that information includes a form of, a form of proof of residency like a driver's license or state ID, a utility bill, piece of mail, none of which I shared, nor do I have access to. But that was my interpretation of the statute, so I got curious. What would a lawyer say? So I talked to a couple of them. And in fact, the library attorney, Mallory Malusi, confirmed that cardholder, quote, cardholder status isn't exempt information under the Library Confidentiality Act. In other words, for those of us who don't speak lawyer, someone, whether someone does or doesn't have a library card is not privileged information. And you can find, you can find more details in today's board packet on page 21. And that made me start to get curious about libel and slander and defamation, which are all very interesting and something I'll be spending more time on in the future. As a taxpayer, I might also be justifiably concerned about Mr. Wool's statement from this evening and from last week about our cash reserve. 1.4 million in 2020, 78,000, I think he said, in 2025. So I decided to get curious. First, I wondered where the numbers came from and they seemed to have come from the village budget books from the last few years. Then I got curious about how those different from the library's budget discussions that of, that of course I'm a part of as a trustee, and the ways in which we try to minimize the impact to Downers Grove taxpayers year over year and maximize the library's ability to accomplish its goals and pay its staff fairly. The numbers presented in the village budget documents for future budget years and their simple linear projections, but if you look back at past reports, they consistently under-report the balance of the library fund year over year. That is because, as someone previously pointed out, the library has operated under budget for the last several years. And when this happens, the board votes annually to move funds into what's called the Library Capital Replacement Fund, or LCRF. The balance of the LCRF fluctuates based on all the projects outlined in our capital needs assessment, but always has to stay above about $500,000 in order to cover any catastrophic problems that might happen to our roof or our boiler, for example. The LCRF also helps us avoid costly referendums to improvements for the library. And I'm hopeful that as we start seeing proposals for building improvements as part of our strategic plan, we can plan smaller project over the course of several years. This basically is the equivalent of a savings account for both foreseen and unforeseen capital expenditures. All of this can be found on the transparency page and Julie does a great job of explaining all of this annually in our, in around July at our board meetings, if you want to go back and watch those recordings. And if you're curious about how DGPL's per capita spending, per capita visits, access and collection usage compare to other libraries, you can also find that information in our benchmarking section of our strategic planning documents in the findings book, also on the library's transparency page. So if I just bored you to death, I'm sorry. Doing this research did not take long, though. But it did take a little more time than it takes to lob accusations or gotcha statements at us during these meetings. I find the repeated implication that the library or the board is hiding something somewhat ironic. I've been looking around at other public libraries' websites because of the board goals that we'll be discussing later on in this meeting. And I have to say that our library's level of transparency far exceeds anything I've seen on any other library's website. Not only do we have multiple strategic planning documents and annual goals, financial plans, and of course, our board meeting agendas and minutes and recordings going back to 2017. We also have all of our FOIA requests out there and the responses. And all of our security, our security incident reports have been readily available for the last several months as well. And these are all really great places to start if you decide to get curious. And finally, I just had a request for information that maybe you can help with, Julie. At a recent village council meeting, it was suggested by a member of our community that the threats and harassment that library staff and board members have faced were false and not credible because there's no substantiation. And it was further suggested that we needed to, you know, find out who did what and where to evaluate whether those claims of harassment were true. So I started thinking about this and imagining myself in that situation, like if someone were to spit at me in the street or start a confrontation at a birthday party. I wonder if I'd have the presence of mind to consider what options were available to me? Should I walk up to that individual and ask them their name, take down witness information? Confronting someone who's threatening or harassing you like that or lingering in that situation any more than you need to seems like a unwise and unsafe option. And that probably goes for things that are happening online, too. So I was just curious, if you had received any advice from the police or the village or anyone else, you know, what we should do in those situations?
The, the advice that we have received is that if anyone is harassed, they should make a police report.
And that, that goes for online harassment as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carissa, for your comments. I always learn a lot from them. Mine are very short and somewhat repetitive. So first of all, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. My goal in my trustee comments was really just to take advantage of such a large group and share some of the great work that the library does. So that being said, and again, repetitive, but also bears repetition. As Mayor Barnett mentioned at the March 5th village council meeting, March is National Social Work Month. I wanted to extend this acknowledgement both to the library's current social work interns, but also the previous ones that we've been so fortunate to have. The social work intern program is funded entirely by donations made to the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation, as our previous speaker had, had shared. This program was launched and approved by the Board of Trustees in 2020 in partnership with Aurora University and has proven to be a highly effective way of connecting many of our community members to much-needed resources. So please check out the foundation website. They have a lot more information, especially on ways that you can donate. And I was very impressed, as Dave had pointed out, The Discoveries has some really great statistics, but also our board packet does as well. And I learned that in February alone, our social work interns had 89 one-on-one contacts with people in our community. So they are very much needed and very much appreciated. I also want to congratulate EQDG on their One Book One Town. It's a great book. There's, you know, please, if you didn't get a chance to read it, read it and also listen to it. The audiobook's phenomenal. March is also Women's History Month and the library held a wide variety of programs as well as highlighted important women's authors. Unfortunately, if you are sitting here tonight, you are missing a wonderful virtual event with Ruth E. Carter, who is best known for winning an Oscar for her costume design for Black Panther. This is one of the many events that the Downers Grove Library patrons have access to through a collaboration called Illinois Libraries Present, which the, which we joined in 2022. It was a board-approved initiative. I'm thrilled that our library has joined this group to provide quality programming at a fraction of the cost that it normally would be to us. Upcoming speakers through Illinois Libraries Presents include Temple Grandin in April and Cal Penn in May. The departmental reports included in this month's board packet, as always, highlight the wonderful work that the staff is doing, including already preparing for Summer Reading Club. I am very excited to find out what the theme is. I don't know yet, but. Of note was the staff's participation in the webinar entitled Making Technology Accessible. I also had an opportunity to attend a webinar entitled Inclusive Placemaking. Both of these webinars aid both the staff and trustees in working towards our strategic plan. Specifically, this information pertains to our goals for access in which we seek to improve access to resources, services and spaces to ensure everyone, especially those with mobility limitations, neurodivergence, or lack, lack of experience with libraries, to feel welcome and comfortable utilizing the library. So for more information about our strategic plan, please visit the Downers Grove Public Library website under Learn About Us and scroll down to Transparency, which has been a common theme tonight. Lastly, I'd like to highlight the latest Discoveries issue. This is also available digitally online. This issue highlights not only the finances of the library, but includes wonderful feedback on how our community enjoys the library. And parents, please do not forget to check out all the wonderful offerings that are available for your students over spring break. There's a lot of in-house programming as well as takeaway programming. And just a reminder, it's, it's a wonderful place. A lot of us have kids that come alone to the library. Just a reminder that you please remind them to be respectful to staff and each other and just be on their best behavior. So thank you very much. Marty, do you have anything else to add? All right. We'll, we'll check in with her later. We'll move on to the item eight, library director's report. We'll move on to the Item 8, Library Director's Report.
First, I will address a couple of things that came up from some others. As Carissa stated, with the library's capital reserve fund, if you go on the DGlibrary.org/Transparency, you will find both the capital needs assessment report and a financial management plan that were put together back in 2017. And those were done, we had done the capital needs assessment, and the village really wanted the library to be able to do its capital needs assessment without having to go to referendum or have a double-digit percentage increase to the levy, which is what the financial management plan asked for. And to help us do that, the village entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the library to cover any of the cash flow issues created by the tax levy distribution timing. That situation was actually created by the village when they changed their fiscal year, which also affected the library, but the library had no control over. Anyway, so we entered into this IGA with the village to free up the $1.4 million so that the library could do 10 years of capital projects without a major levy increase or going to referendum. We are now seven years into those projects, and we've done all of the big-ticket items, save one, that's the carpeting, we're holding off on that right now, but we did the roof, we did the HVAC system and the boilers, we did electrical panels, we've done all sorts of things. And if you go onto that capital needs, onto the transparency page, you can see a list of all of those. I also explain it during our budget planning process every year in the summer. As Carissa alluded to, those board packets are again posted on the website. You can go back, watch the recording, you can read through the board packets, the information is available. And one of our speakers talked about the extended title information that is available in the catalog for certain, for titles as you search them. That extended title information is provided by SWAN, our cooperative catalog, and that is not, the only lists that are controlled by the library are the ones the library creates. All of the, a lot of that extended title information comes from a third-party vendor through SWAN, so we don't control it. Let's see. So I did want to let you all know that a public comment and FOIA have no expectation of privacy. Your name will appear in the minutes and on the FOIA request tracker if there are FOIA requests about that information. DGlibrary.org/Transparency, I feel like I say that a lot. Library Records Confidentiality Act does not cover whether you have a library card, only your registration information, that's things like date of birth, email address. So when a staff member or a trustee says that as of 5:00 PM today, Bill Nienberg does not have a library card, it is in no way illegal. Library staff also have First Amendment rights while performing their jobs, and this includes making incident reports about behavior in the library and during public meetings. I also wanted to highlight our tween area update that, as Dave was talking about, is shown in our most recent issue of discoveries. That area has been incredibly well-used. The kids love it, we're getting great feedback. In the first month it was open, we had more than 50 kids check out the controllers to do gaming in that area, so it's going great. The teen desk is helping us. We put a temporary desk in our teen area upstairs. We're staffing it only in the afternoons and on some weekends, and that is going really well and has helped to reduce the number of behavioral incidents by teens in the library. I do want to also draw your attention to the 12% increase in foot traffic in this past February compared to the February prior. So we are busier than ever. On Monday, we set a new record for storytime attendance. Over 90 people were at Monday morning storytime. So... And we had over 300 people come for the Trinity Irish dancers, so many they could not fit in the room, and the dancers were spectacular, shout-out to them. They actually put on a second mini-performance for the folks who couldn't get in the room for the original performance. So thank you, Trinity Irish dancers, you guys are great. Our 2024 work plan, the strategic plan, is going really well, and again, you can find it all on the transparency page. But we have some great programming initiatives coming up. Our programming coordinator is working with Braver Angels to do a program series, so look for that in the future. And we will be having a human library event this fall. So if you don't, a human library is when an individual acts as a book and shares their story with you, and you get to check out that book to have a conversation. And it's a great way to learn about people's lives and stories and connect. So look for, in April, we will be putting out the call for volunteers for our human library event, so we're very excited about that. Other great programs we have going, there's going to be a coding camp program this summer, a little mini camp for coding for kids. I just thought that was incredible. And then I want to highlight our amazing assistant director, Jen Rieske, and Mary Hurtado, our programming coordinator, and the team that put together a grant from the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum and the American Library Association called Americans in the Holocaust. And we were awarded this grant, which will have a traveling exhibit and $3,000 for programming to complement the exhibit, which will be coming to us in April and May of 2026. And especially thank you to Mayor Barnett, Dr. Hank Thiele, Dr. Kevin Russell, whose letters of support helped us win this grant. And that's all I have. Thank you. Trustee Sladek's call got dropped, and she has reconnected and would like to make a trustee comment.
We'll just hold tight real quick.
We're holding tight for Marty. Unfortunately, she had a family emergency out of state.
Hello, we are back in the chambers.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, the floor is yours, Marty. Marty, are you there?
Hello, Mrs. Doug, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I'm not going to make formal comments tonight. We need to move along with the rest of our business, but thank you all for your patience in getting me back online.
Thank you, Marty. We are on to Item 9, which is new business, which we do not have, so we can move right along to Item Number 10, which is our unfinished business, Board of Library Trustee Goals for 2024. Do you want to?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not going to reread all the business from last week, or last month, I should say. I hope you all took a little bit of time to think about, think about some of your goals and what you might want to do. I can, I was hoping tonight to be able to at least have a discussion about what you've been thinking, and then by next month have, you know, have those kind of documented and be able to say, hey, these are our goals, let's approve them and get them kind of on the books.
Yeah. I, so I've been diving more heavily into training, and I think, so I shared with the trustees a couple of different learning platforms that we can take advantage of. The ILA has a specific trustee playlist, which runs through a lot of, you know, meeting decorum, you know, the inclusive placemaking webinar, so that's a great resource. The ILEAD is a really great refresher, far more user-friendly than the original OMA training that we had to go through. So I would love to see some sort of independent component to our board goals, just because that's also the most availability, right? And, you know, I think refreshers and a lot of basic stuff is helpful, along with webinars that kind of reach towards or speak to our strategic goals. As far as library visits, I love the idea of going to see places that have newly or have existing Makerspaces. I think it's kind of my choice, since that's kind of the direction we want to move, and just kind of seeing a variety of brand-new facilities versus people that have, you know, found space in existing buildings, I think would be great. I'm trying to pull up that list you gave us.
Yeah, I think I'm leaning, I wanted to focus on two different things, kind of for my own, you know, understanding what I think challenges we have and challenges I personally have as a board member. I wanted to focus, one, on that kind of strategic outlook and looking at Makerspaces. It's, like I said, I think it'll be really interesting to see what other libraries have done and how they've put, and especially those that have maybe lived in them for a little while, too, because I think there's something really interesting to see how those spaces might have adapted and adopted, you know, to different user behavior over that time. And I wanted, and I was hoping to kind of kill two birds with one stone and also go and visit some other Board of Trustees meetings, both in libraries that are similar kind of size and dimension, you know, in terms of population, like where they're located, and also in terms of just kind of what they're dealing with, you know, whether they're going through strategic planning, whether they've had, you know, different layers of public comment. I think it's really interesting to see how other boards, you know, operate. I don't think I've ever been to another public meeting for another Board of Trustees, and I'd be curious to see how they're, you know, how closely do they follow Robert's rules? How, you know, do they sit up on a podium like this? Like, what is their, what is their overall order of operations? I think I'd really love to learn more about that.
Yeah. Definitely. I mean, I'm looking at the list you provided, which is awesome. Like, I guess the libraries that are kind of sticking out to me just based on community size and the fact that they have a Makerspace is like St. Charles Public Library, Fountaindale, and Oak Park. I feel like we met somebody from Oak Park, right? Oh, you have some...
Yeah, Leconne and I, we met some.
Yeah, so maybe those we could kind of work on reaching out to and setting up something with them would be good, a good start. And I'm sure Julie knows everybody, so that helps.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Marty and Julie individually kind of emailed me back to add a couple of things to that list that I started, just because they knew of other things that I hadn't come across yet, so I'll be adding that, and you can just kind of stay tuned to see how that list changes.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
One thing that I would like to add to the list, and I don't have this worked out well yet because I want to consult with some of you and some other folks who know, could facilitate such a session, but I think the word governance has been kicked around a lot recently, and I think we can all, even though our job is to govern, we can still learn things about how to make that process work more efficiency, more efficiently, and also more, higher-quality level of conducting meetings and setting policy and so forth. And particularly as new board members join the board, we need to have sessions like that. But old dogs can learn new tricks, too. And so I would welcome the opportunity for us in the near future, and certainly after new members join the board, have a workshop session, for want of a better term, where no business is transacted and no votes are taken, but with a facilitator who can help us as a group share how we can do our jobs better.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see that as a goal.
I think Dave took my comments because that's what I was going to say. I really appreciated, when I first joined the board, that we had, we did some workshopping, and we didn't conduct sort of regular business, but we also just got to kind of know each other and understand our roles and where, again, our strengths and weaknesses were, and how we could best support one another and where we needed to learn. That taught me a lot about what my role should be, and I think that governance is something that we need to go back to and review and continue to work on. So I'd like some opportunities to do some large group work. But also, I signed up for the ILEAD portal tomorrow, there's one, oh, sorry, Friday morning in Burr Ridge. There's a lot of really interesting training programs that are available to us that are free, even. They're not, you know, things that we have to pay for. And another thing is, at the ILA conference, we got to meet a lot of other trustees, and I think it was a really, it was really beneficial for us to meet other trustees just because we learned what they were doing in their library, some of the challenges they were facing, how they had worked through some of those challenges, how they had come out as a group through them. So I really love the idea of visiting other libraries, maybe attending some trustee meetings. I did reach out to some of the trustees that we met at ILA, and everyone is like, yeah, we'll come to one of your meetings, you come to one of our meetings. So it's, so I think it's interesting that, and it's a way for us to serve our community better.
Yeah, I like that idea, Dave, that you mentioned about, you know, getting some help, just even like doing just governance work, not dealing with any agenda items, kind of, you know, working through that again. I'd be curious, like, who can do that? Like, I mean, you know, in terms of like, who can we invite to help us with that? So I'd be really curious about that, and I, you know, want to find out from someone, I'm not sure who, maybe some of those board members that you have contact with might have some ideas.
I have some thoughts, but we can consult with some people. Made reference to the Downers Grove Village Council tonight, and maybe there's some things we can learn from them. District 99 and District 58 school boards, we can write here in our own community. But there are associations of boards that have facilitators also, so we'll do a little work on that. But as, I just would like to have a goal to accomplish something like that soon.
So Carissa, how about I touch base, just maybe tomorrow, and maybe just start kind of a conversation with a few libraries and kind of see what we can get set up? And I'll, you know, keep you updated or even just kind of keep this Excel spreadsheet updated with, you know, who I've talked to or what, and you can kind of go from there?
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. Perfect. Any other comments?
Quick point of order on the spreadsheet that they have shared, that is a view-only spreadsheet so that OMA is not being violated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments regarding board goals?
I have none.
Okay, perfect. We do have an executive session listed on the agenda, however, we have no executive topics to discuss tonight, so we are at the adjournment. It is 8:49, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all so much for coming, and as always, feel free to email us or contact us on our website if you have any additional comments or questions. Thank you.